Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Thursday, June 30th, 2022. Tonight, this is the Planning and Zoning Special Meeting. We have a public hearing and a general meeting to be held tonight, and a few little items at the end of the agenda. So getting started right away, we now have a quorum with everybody present. We have Jeff Ball, George Riley, Adam Balrak, and Jim Rand.
I tried.
Oh, don't do that to Adam. He's been here for me.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, gosh.
Do you know my name?
I was thinking of a restaurant.
Brutal.
So getting started right away, we have a continuation of public here regarding proposed amendments to the zoning regulations, COZR number 2-2022, site plan application number 310, special permit application number 324, flood damage prevention application number 425-7 Cedric Avenue, 7 Cedric LLC. This application has been withdrawn, so everybody's here tonight for that application on 7 Cedric. The application was withdrawn just for your edification. That's the old Bank of America Bank branch site that's outside of the Goodwife Shopping Center. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Public hearing item number two is going to be proposed amendments to the Darien zoning regulations, COZR number 3-2022, put forth by FR Darien LLC. Proposal to amend section 210 of the Darien zoning regulations to clarify definitions relating to co-working space and medical spas. Proposal to amend section 742 of the Darien zoning regulations to allow office uses to occupy up to 20% of the closed floor area of buildings in the Nuroten Heights business zone, innate zone. As of right permitted principal use on the first floor. Proposal to amend sections 743 of the Darien zoning regulations to eliminate business and professional offices as a principal use requiring a special permit. The full text of the proposed zoning regulations are on file and available in the town clerk's office and the planning zoning office for inspection and online at darienct viewpointcloud.com. Today, in the last couple of days, we've had some amendments to this application. So I'll let Jeremy take it away and tell us where we are today.
Sure, as Steve noted, this is an application put forth by Federal Realty related to the NH zoning district. They've been working closely within our office on some zoning regulation amendments, and there are really two types of amendments. The first is to change and clarify a few definitions in section 210. Some of that are related more so to modernize the zoning regulations. Fred and I, as commission staff, get numerous calls and inquiries about, I'll call them, medical spas, which are procedures which probably didn't exist 10, 20 years ago, but are very common today. Cosmetic surgery, hair transplants, cosmetic injections, laser skin treatments, et cetera. And so we have been traditionally, for a few years now, considering them medical office space. But that's never really been clear in the regs, but that's the way we've considered them. So one of the goals of this proposal is to clarify that in this part of the proposal that's included. The other is to better define co-working space. As you know, we've talked about co-working space for a few years now with, I think, one or two of them now located in the DO Zone at 320, 330 Boston Post Road. I'll call it the building the home Duchess. But we never really had a good definition of that. So this creates a definition for co-working space and categorizes it accordingly in the business and professional office. And it also creates a definition for building complex, which relates, if you will, to the changes to propose 742. Right now, in section 742, medical and dental offices are allowed on the upper floors in the Nuroten Heights Zone. You may recall in the 40 Heights Road building, there used to be some upstairs doctor's offices. This would amend the regulations to allow some limited amount of medical or dental offices on the first floors in a building complex, such as what Federal Realty is building, to a certain extent. What Mike Murray, who's here, has described to me, as well as Patrick McMahon of Federal Realty, is times have changed relative to what many retailers look for. And what Patrick explained is some retailers really want to be near office space. And so this would give Federal Realty an opportunity to create a little bit of office space, again, a maximum of 10%, but it would allow them to better attract certain retailers who want to be adjacent or in the same building as office, medical office space. So that's a little bit of the background. Mike Murray is here from Ivy Barnum Mara to shed a little more light on the zone change proposal.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Kevin's also here, right?
Correct. Yes, I should also point out my colleague Terry Kribbin is with me as well, and Patrick McMahon is on the call, too. Jeremy, thank you for your description. The reason we're here is, you know, retail has changed. The world has changed since the approvals were obtained for this project. We all have, you know, deliveries from Amazon and stuff like that. There's just not as much retail to go around anymore. We've tried to maybe modernize or improve a little bit the definitions in the regs. And I should point out that we've sort of reduced our request a little bit and tried to eliminate the unintended consequences. So really, what we're asking for is to allow for medical and dental uses on the first floor with a limit of 10% on the first floor. And what we've done, because this proposal doesn't affect us, there's other properties in the zone. So we tried to, when we did define a complex, which has to have more than 100 square feet of commercial square footage, and we would limit it to 10%. I should also point out that the medical and dental uses are already allowed on the seventh floor. We're very mindful of the fact that when this was approved, the intent there was to create a community feel over there, a village feel with lots of pedestrian access and whatnot. And this proposal doesn't take away from that. And maybe I'll let Patrick explain. He's got a lot of experience, both locally and nationally, on what the tenants are asking for. A traditional retail tenant is very much in favor of these uses, and in fact, some of them even require them. Patrick, would you like to maybe explain that a little bit to make sure I'm doing it justice?
Patrick, give me your.
Certainly. Can you hear me okay now?
Yep, you got your net.
Fantastic. Thank you, Michael, and Jeremy, and Chairman Alveny, and members of the commission for the opportunity to speak a little bit about this tonight and for your consideration of the amendment. As Michael said and Jeremy said earlier, you know, for us, Federal Realty and for this particular, very specific property, this is a lot more than about allowing a couple of additional uses for tenants that we do have unexecuted leases for that fall into the medical, dental, med spa category. It's really about creating a self-sustaining, healthy retail ecosystem. And, you know, 10 years ago, when we were first looking at this property, even five years ago, when we secured the special permit for it back in the summer, actually, it was almost five years to the day, or to the month. It was the summer of 2017. The retail environment was in the process of evolving and certainly has continued to evolve over the past five years, COVID being a catalyst, accelerating some of those changes. And as Jeremy alluded to earlier, certainly med spa probably didn't even exist 15, 20 years ago. Today, we have three leases, as I said earlier, unexecuted, because we need to first petition the commission for their allowed use. We have several uses that fall into these use categories by users, by tenants, whose business model is to seek ground floor, first floor, street-level occupancy in urban retail environments and in mixed-use environments, just like this, just like the one that we have or were under construction with here in Darien. These users exist on the ground floor in Manhattan, Upper East Side, Upper West Side, in Brooklyn, urban neighborhoods such as that, Washington DC, Boston, Massachusetts, as well as suburban mixed-use retail streets, Scarsdale, New York, Wellesley, Massachusetts. And in fact, some of these tenants, we have put into our mixed-use environments in suburban locations as well. Bethesda, Maryland is one that comes to mind. These are retailers that are not looking, med spa, dental, that are not looking for second floor, third floor, fourth floor use, where you traditionally would have found them 20 years ago. Rather, they want to be in an active, street retail environment because they believe their customer is there. And I think there's probably no greater endorsement of that evolution than the fact that the traditional retail environment has embraced that. And in fact, very specific to this property, we have two traditional retailers with whom we have agreed to lease terms. They have not yet executed their leases. Their leases are contingent on securing approval for at least one of the three tenants that fall into these use categories. I would take one as a women's apparel category that falls into the women's apparel category. That user is probably a traditional retailer, conventional retailer that you'd have found 20 years ago, 100 years ago. That user wants to be co-located or located adjacent to, near to, say, the med spa or the dentist office, because their user, their customer, is the same customer that's walking into that med spa. And so the med spa or the dentist's office is creating a reason to be on the street, on the sidewalk, in the neighborhood, in the environment, beyond just the specific use of that traditional retailer. So, you know, as I think as Michael had said and Jeremy said earlier, our world, the retail world, has evolved considerably. And for us, it truly is about creating a self-sustaining, healthy retail ecosystem where these retailers enhance the viability of one another to ensure the long-term success of the project. So again, I appreciate the consideration tonight. Happy to give further color there. I do want to make one particular point, and it's a little bit of a planning point, a little bit wonky, but certainly those in the commission and Jeremy and folks like Fred probably appreciate this. We will not locate these, the users that I have talked about, the three with whom we have unexecuted leases, we're not going to locate them on the ends or the end caps or the corners of the building. Indeed, we want to put the users, the retail tenants, that are the most active, most dynamic, most vibrant, on those end caps and on those corners. And the reason for that is, a corner, by its very definition, has more than one side, more than one storefront. An end cap, in many cases, has two sides or even three sides. We want users, and by and large, those are food and beverage, restaurant users, to be in those locations because they activate the space. They put the tables and chairs outside. They create a dynamic and a warmth that draws people into the neighborhood. We're going to put the users that we're talking about tonight that fall into these use categories in board or in line. We're not putting them on a corner. So for us, there's more than, as I said, it's more than just securing a couple of additional leases and continuing to roll here. It's about creating a healthy ecosystem. It's about putting the right retailers where they ought to be to draw folks in from the neighborhood and from the community.
Okay, thank you. Now, when we're talking, I guess, what we're looking at is the first, I mean, everybody knows for the commission, the first talk we're looking at says, FR Darien LLC, application proposed text amendments to zoning regulations. First thing you got on is definitions, and it goes principal permitted uses, then other items that require the special permit. They also attached part of the site plan of the property, which shows the, I think there is a total of six buildings that are new. Then there's the Chase Bank, which is the seventh building. And then if you look on the site plan, which is also in your packets, that says, Darien Commons, Federal Realty. That also shows the Vivalas building, so there's eight buildings in there. So at the end of the day, I think we're talking about a commercial shopping center, which is about 125,000 square feet. And if there's 10%, the simple math is about 12,500 square feet of this medical, dental, and office space is not included in the 10%, right? It's just medical demo?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So if you look on, if the commissioners look on the site plan that's attached. You got a big version and a little version in it. At the bottom, it's got the commercial parking little box where it adds up to 117,000 square feet, and it shows you all the different uses. There's, for example, just real quick, there's 24,000 square feet of retail. There's 14,000 square feet of restaurant. And the other big items are the fitness center, which is 30,000 feet. And then the other one is the pharmacy, which is about 12,000 feet. So this falls in, this category falls in the like 10% range, which is the same thing as a pharmacy. But Patrick, just for, I guess, my own personal edification, are we talking one single tenant? Or is it going to be, you know, a Delta Dental or Pearl Dental and an urgent care? Or, you know, keeping the med spa out of it for a second?
Sure. Right now, we've got three prospective tenants. One is, as you said, the med spa, so we'll keep them out for a second. One is a dental, and we're bound by confidentiality relative to the actual specific names and brands. But indeed, you'd find them in the neighborhoods that are most of the neighborhoods that I just suggested, and we're putting them in Bethesda, Maryland right now and in Somerville, Massachusetts. And then the other is a medical user. It is not an urgent care. It is not, it's not, it's not that type of medical user, but it's a more, you know, doctor office, sort of, I guess, as you conventionally understand that to be. And they too exist and seek out ground floor space in urban and mixed-use suburban environments.
Okay. Because in my course of business, I mean, this is kind of sort of what I do for a living. I don't lease and sell, but I do appraisal stuff. Some of the, Patrick mentioned more of the urban areas. We're more of a suburban district, but in recent project that I've worked on, which is Cortland Crossing, which is near Yorktown, Yorktown Heights, Chapel Quad Crossing, which is right next to, it's in the town of Newcastle, New York and Westchester, which is really a high-end town. Hudson Heritage is up by Hyde Park. That's where the Marist College is. That's a brand-new center. Another one I just worked on is called the Edge Fitness, the Edge Shopping Center that's up in Trumbull, Monroe, on Monroe Turnpike. All of those shopping centers that I just mentioned have like a Delta Dental or Pearl Dental on the ground floor. They also have urgent cares on the ground floor. None of them, relative to the co-working space, none of them have co-working spaces, but most of them do have some kind of nail salon spa stuff. I mean, when I work on these projects, I don't necessarily go inside the spas to see what they're doing in there. But it says spa on the front door, whether it's medical and people doing Botox or whatnot. I don't have the foggiest idea. So I think what we're after here is like what Patrick says, to create an ecosystem, and that's what we're trying to figure out here. And I also appreciate the fact that we're talking about the complex. I don't know if we have to get into the weeds on exactly how many square feet your complex is at this point. But, you know, I know when you do the parking, Jeremy's keeping to tell you how many restaurants are there, how much this adds up to, how much that adds up to. So it kind of sort of forces into the parking item in it. You want to go over these changes, Mike, that you did, and just walk us through them so we can try to blow through this quickly? Or is that a Terry question?
Sure. What, Terry, you want to take that?
To go through the proposed text amendment as changed today?
That would be great.
Okay, sure. So where we began was in the definitions. And the reason for the change to the definition of office was honestly just to update it to include co-working space. We are not asking for any office space change to the zoning regulations tonight. But if at some point we wanted to come back to ask for a special permit for professional and business offices, we would hope that that would include co-working, because that may be something that we would want in the future. So the purpose of that first change is to say, when we're talking about business and professional offices, that's inclusive of co-working space.
Okay.
And then if we go on to the medical and dental, it's kind of the same theory to say, well, let's take a medical spa, which is sort of popping up all over the place. And what does that mean? And can we include that as an office for medical or dental? And so in coming up with that definition, we did some research on what Connecticut law considers a medical spa. And it does require that it be operated under the supervision of a physician or a physician's assistant or an advanced practice registered nurse. And it kind of details the types of procedures you would associate with a medical spa, like a Botox or skin treatments or cosmetic surgery. So again, the point was to sort of flush that out and to say, okay, we may have a tenant that's actually a spa. There is, you know, medical procedures that are occurring there, and there is some supervision by a licensed practitioner, which would differentiate it from just your normal personal service spa. So that was the point of that definitional change. And then when we get to building complex, we really kind of backed into that as a definition, because the goal here was to allow as a permitted use a certain amount of medical and dental space. And then when we started to think about that, we wanted to make sure that we were not affecting other parcels within the zone in a way that might not make sense from a planning perspective. So as sort of a way to narrow the focus, we've said, okay, if we want to allow some limited amount of medical and dental space, then what we want to do is tie it to the commercial square footage on a certain parcel or contiguous parcels that might be in common ownership. So we backed into that definition to say, when we have a piece of land that's improved with more than one building and the combined square footage is in excess of 100,000 square feet, I'm sorry, the combined commercial square footage is in excess of 100,000 square feet, then allow us 10% of that for medical and dental. Because we don't want to change the character of the neighborhood or the character or the intention of the project. But as Patrick and Mike have said, it's almost like a hybrid retail when you're talking about the medical and dental today, the way things have changed. And so that led us to the definition of building complex. And then in 742 is where we say, okay, if we have a building complex, allow us 10% of permitted use for medical and dental. And we didn't make any changes anymore to 743 because we abandoned the whole concept of asking for professional offices.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yep, it does. And just for everyone's education, this is just for the Nuroten Heights Zone. So for example, you can't, like Leary Liquors, if Leary Liquors wanted to put a dentist on their ground floor, they could not do that because they're not in excess of 100,000 square feet. Am I into this right?
Yeah.
And also, this does not cover what we would call Goodwife Shopping Center.
Correct, different zoning district.
It also does not cover the Corbin District. This is just to this block. Okay, so that's it. Then I just want to go back real quick to the office of professional zones. If you read what's definitely in here, you can have a lawyer, which would be Mike, and you could have a real estate broker, which would be me. And you could have an architect, which would be anyone, as an architect, all sitting in separate offices in a complex. Now, what they're doing is they're putting these three guys or these three people inside the same space. So I'm going to sit inside an office, and it's going to be, you know, WeWorks or something like that, and Mike's going to be at one desk, and I'm going to be at a different desk, and insurance guy's going to be at a third desk. So all those uses are already permitted in the zone, except now they're going to go inside one 5,000-square-foot box, since each guy having 500 square feet in their own front door. So to me, that's not really a huge change, but I liked the idea. I mean, I just worked on a project up in Westport when it was like that, and these guys had all flat screens on the ground floor, and they were having a great time, and they were right across, they were right next to two restaurants. This is all we're doing for this one, right? This is, that's the end of this.
That's the extent of the request. And Mike, you would say these changes are consistent with the 2016 Town Plan of Conservation and Development?
Very much.
Yeah. I mean, we approved this thing, it's 2016, so it's, what's that, seven years ago? The world's changed in seven years. Does any commissioners have any questions, comments, thoughts, issues, changes to something like this? You want to go first, Adam?
Sure. So just to be clear on it, so one question, if we wrote into the, for section 740 and the principal uses, if we added like an extra text on like item B or item D that said that they can't go on the end caps, would that impact? Like if we encoded that, would that impact your leasing agreements? I know you said that, but saying it is different than us putting it in writing.
It would, no, it would not. It would not impact our leasing agreement.
Okay. And then on this, so it looks like the only thing we want to change is to change the overall gross floor area of the buildings to 20% and not, I don't, there's no amendment that I saw that talks about the 10% just for professional offices and then 30% for medical.
That went away. That went away, Adam.
Oh, it went away. Oh, that's fine.
What you've got today is the latest and greatest.
That's why I thought, because it was a little confusing. So I read through the thing today. Okay, so that did go away.
Right. In our packet, we got 20 and 20. Then in the letter dated June 21st, it went 10 and 30. Now it's just 10%.
Okay, perfect.
And the whole complex. And the other one said building, so it's not buildings anymore. It's.
Yeah, I thought that. Okay, I just wasn't sure because there was three or four of these things floating around. Other than that, then no. So I'm okay with it as it's defined, if we want to add the end caps, if other commissioners think that that's an idea.
I want to comment in a second after we go around the horn. Jeff Ball, any questions on this one?
You're good.
Jim Rand, anything on this one?
You're good.
George Riley?
I just want to be clear about the 100,000 square building issue. I'm just glancing quickly at 1,000, section 1,000, and then section 11, 20, and whatnot. I don't see a specific reference to the 100,000. Where does that come in? How do we know that these are applicable only to buildings greater than 100,000 square feet?
More than one building with a combined commercial square footage. Now, Mike and Patrick, maybe you can answer this. Is it, I guess, the two big buildings, I'll call it the R1, where Stop and Stop used to be, and R3, which is the building right on Heights Road surrounding Vivalas, if you will, those are on the same parcel? And I guess what you're talking here, the definition of building complex, would also allow you to bring in the Vivalas parcel and the 40 Heights Road parcel? Is that true? I guess that's George's question.
The way it's written, it would. Yes.
But I'm looking for a reference to the section of the regs that refers to the 100,000 square feet.
Well, that's what's being added on definitions 210, right?
210 under building complex.
We created that definition for building complexes.
Okay, the facility per, I'm reading quickly, but I'm just not seeing in 210 a reference to 100,000 square feet.
Did you get it by email today, George?
Oh, am I looking? Oh, am I looking at the wrong thing? Maybe I'm looking, I'm looking at, well, whatever was received June 16th. Does that date it?
No, you're later. That's, no.
No, I sent something out today, George. That's.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. So it is covered there?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry. Sorry. I didn't take your time. Okay.
Yeah, the June, the one that says stamped June 16th that you received, that one that was in your packet? That's been, that's been redone.
Okay. Adam avoided my asking about the 2020 on that one. So, okay, I'm with you.
Yep. That's gone.
That was in an email today, did you say?
Yep.
Haven't been, okay.
Back in the old days when we're in a room, you'd probably get handed to it by Wylder Leeson.
Right, that's fine.
He was always a, he was always a day, day of the game changer.
That's fine.
With regards to the end cap item, I mean, and I'm not trying to tie your hands or not tie your hands because I think Patrick, you're tying your own hands. On that one project I was just telling you about that I went up to, which is in Trumbull, Connecticut, there was a Chip's Restaurant. That was a great restaurant. Everybody loved it. When COVID hit, Chips went out of business and it was an end cap. And they replaced it with an urgent care place where it's got a big Band-Aid out front. I can, I can bet you at Dallas and Donuts, you cannot get that Band-Aid logo in our town if you try to get a pass of the ARB. But that is, that is an end cap. I mean, and then it's some of the Delta Dental that's up in Chappaqua and the, that's also a color crossing. Those are, you know, on end caps. You know, I've seen them. It's, you can do whatever you want. But I mean, to Adam's point, we can stick it in there if you don't mind, but you're, you're more than welcome to put them wherever you want to.
Appreciate it and, and appreciate it very much. I, I would ask, I would ask that we, that you not include, or my preference would be to not include the language to restrict to in-board only for that reason. That there, I have no idea what the retail environment will be in 10 years. And if somebody goes out, if a tenant on an end cap or a corner goes out, it's a, it's a, it's tough, it might be tough to fill that space with the additional restriction. You know, that said, indeed, it is our intent because it's our, it goes to our philosophy on, on what makes sense for a healthy retail ecosystem. We're, the three tenants that I continued to mention there several times, we are putting them in board. We are not putting any of these users on the end caps or on the corners in the initial occupancy here. So I, which is why I answered no to Adam's question. None, none of those tenants that I mentioned is going to an end cap or going to a corner. But ideally, I would, our preference would be to, to allow the use, you know, in any location. Because again, I, you know, what happens in five years, what happens in 10 years, I don't exactly know.
Right. Because I mean, I'm staring at your, your site plan. Isn't Innovative Invitations, isn't that vacant today? That's next of our values?
Correct. Yes.
So if you wanted to put a dentist office in there or, you know, some kind of.
Would be prohibited.
Right. That's what, that's what, Adam, to your point, Adam, I get your point that he said they're not going to do it, but that's today. But I wouldn't want it to, I mean, I've seen it many, many times in a two building, a two-tented building. There's Horizon on one side and there's, you know, Delta Dental on the other side. And it, it looks, it works. So we could, I guess we could talk about that at deliberations, right?
Sure.
Okay. Because this is just a public hearing, Mike, anything else you want us to add or talk about before we close the hearing?
I think we covered it. If there's any more questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay. Let me just open up to the general, is anyone in the general public like to speak to this application? Seeing, hearing none. Okay. Any other questions for the commissioners? I think we're good. Okay, Mike, we're going to close the hearing unless you have anything else to add.
No, thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Well, can I get a motion to close the hearing? Motion made by Jeff, looking for a second. Adam gets a second. All in favor? Okay, great. We will deliberate this when?
Maybe tonight or our next meeting on the 12th.
Okay. We have time tonight?
If we, I think we have, we might be able to tonight.
Okay. We're going to try to deliberate this tonight if we can at the end and get you a resolution by the 12th, which is our next meeting. All right?
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Are they coming back later for something?
Yeah, they're going to be here to talk about the site plan, special permit, right after these hearings.
All right. So we're going to go out and keep, want to the next item on the thing. And then Mike, you and your team are going to come back, I think.
Yes.
Second time. All right. The next item on the agenda is special permit application number 60R, site plan, landfilling and regating application number 121F as in Frank, Country Club of Darien, 300 Mansfield Avenue. Proposal to make change to the club's golf course by relocating the fifth hole green and the sixth hole tee and the maintenance areas and perform related site development activities. The subject property is located on east side of Mansfield Avenue, approximately 1,250 feet south of its intersection with Millsix Road and Sessors Map number five as lot 40 in the R2 zone. So we got a bunch of stuff in our packets. The easiest thing to do was the letter from Redness and Mead and next to it, it's got two attachments of pretty green existing conditions and non-existing conditions or proposed conditions of what they want to do. So it looks like they're moving a maintenance area from the left to the right. They're moving and sliding the tee box over and signing the green over. Because I bet you if you stand on that tee, you hit it into the neighbor's front backyard. If you, if you hook it like I do. But Jeremy, what do we got?
Sure. Country Club of Darien is a special permit use in residential zone. And as such, changes such as this, they need to come back to the commission. And what, what you're correct is that they're scooting some holes and tees out and creating a small maintenance area in the back, I'll call it the back right corner of their property. The maintenance area would store a variety of soil, grass, other items, and allow the maintenance staff to bring things to that area and take things from that area. It's really an essential part of any golf course. And as Steve said, they're going to be adjusting the fifth green and the sixth tee box, sliding them a little further from the neighbors. And as part of this proposal, they're proposing some plantings to help screen this maintenance area from the neighbors. As part of the proposal, there's no changes to the hours of the club, the membership of the club, the activities of the club. It's still the same exact Country Club of Darien, the same exact uses that have been going on there for well over 50 years, but they're just rearranging some things on there within their 139 acres on site.
So why are we seeing this? Because it's.
Because they're doing some regrading as part of this. Because it's creating new tee boxes and sliding them over and creating this new separate maintenance area. So it's a minor amendment to the special permit and a regrading application.
Okay. It looks like we have Craig Flaherty at Redness and Mead going to take us away on this one.
Here I go. Craig Flaherty, Senior Engineer and Principal with Redness and Mead. We're providing land surveying, engineering and permitting services for the Country Club of Darien. I am joined tonight by the folks you see there in the conference room, the General Manager, President and Superintendent of the Club. If you have any specific questions about operations or intentions, but I'll share my screen and give you the two-minute overview. So here is the aerial from Darien Map Geo GIS system publicly available. You can clearly see the golf course, Mansfield Avenue here on the left or west side of the golf course. This is where the main entrance is off of Mansfield Avenue. If you were ever visiting the club and the main club facilities ever here, you got Brookside Road on the east or right side of the club. And the area in question, if you can see my little hand rotating, is in this northeast corner. And to your point, Steve, I think if this was in the middle of the club, you probably wouldn't see the application. But since it is close to the property edges, it instigated that grading and refilling permit and deference to neighbors to let us notify everybody and give anybody a chance to speak if they wanted to. So this is the pretty picture you were talking about. This is a picture of the existing condition. You can see the green and the tee box where they exist today and the maintenance area where it exists today. This blue line is the Goodwives River. This is the 100-foot setback, which is regulated by the Environmental Protection Commission to the Goodwives River. There's also a flood plain associated with the Goodwives River, but that is all outside of the work area. The flood plain is from this line to the left or west. So none of the work that we're doing is affected by the flood plain. I'll toggle now to the proposed and you'll see the change. I'll go back and forth maybe once or twice. Kind of take a look, but so you see the maintenance area going from the left side to the right side. You see the green shifting left to where the maintenance area was and the tee box fitting in between. And the primary purpose really was to try to provide an improvement of play on these two holes. But it does involve the filling and regrading discussed in the narrative. Club has gone and spoken to both immediate adjacent property owners to the north and to the east and has worked with them to, and Wesley Stout Associates Landscape Architects to develop a screening plan, which consists of Green Giant Arbor Vitae's along the property boundary and the removal of a few trees that are in poor condition or in decline. And that was actually at the request of the neighbors. So they're trying to do the right thing by the neighbors by meeting with them ahead of time and designing the planting plan accordingly. There is a fence indicated at the edge of the maintenance area as well. That's outside of the Environmental Protection Commission 50-foot setback. That may stay there. It may shift if we get wetland approval to shift it. But currently, as you're going to approve it for an additional screening measure, it's at the edge of the maintenance area. And that is it.
We talked about, one thing we talked about was, in one of your pictures, you show a concept of what might be placed where in terms of soil and grass. That's just conceptual. It's going to be on an as-needed basis as JR and his team at the club put together and, and for their different needs. So it's not really specific in terms of what, what's being stored area.
Yeah. The stuff might move around. The sand pile might grow or shrink, the topsoil pile might grow or shrink. But this is an idea of the types of things that are being done in this area. In addition to stockpiling some, you know, right now there's some drainage pipe in the maintenance area because they're getting ready for a particular project where they need the drainage pipe. But this is not a vehicle storage area per se. It is not the area where employees come and go on a daily basis. It is really just a pretty quiet storage area.
Craig, what's the setback from the, the new vinyl fence to the property line?
Probably about 30 feet.
Okay. And there's a road, that's a road that goes there?
Yeah, there's an existing gravel maintenance path there. I'll show you on the aerial what it looks like. This is an existing gravel maintenance path that gets from the maintenance area, the, the storage area down to the real maintenance area where, you know, more of the action happens. So there's a, there's a gravel path that runs along the property boundary and, and up through there. And so when you look at this, basically that path is being reduced in length, which is a decrease in hard surface. But it stays exactly where it is today.
So it's like Crushstone, item four or item five, whatever you call it?
It's like a, like a Vermont dirt road.
Got it. Okay. And so all the new boulders, that's new. The vinyl fence is new. It's going to go there and trees on the bottom are new? Those big trees on the bottom?
Yep. All these trees all the way around it are new.
Okay. Because we did get the letters in the file that, that came from the two neighbors, the Martins and then somebody else. And it looked like they were, it looked like they were, at the end of the day, they were going to be okay with it, but.
I would say neutral or positive.
Yep, got it. Okay. I kind of get what you're doing. Makes a little bit of sense. Now you get it, instead of hook, instead of hooking the ball into the maintenance area, you're going to hook the ball into the water when you're hitting that green. A bitch is going to be out of bounds. Any questions or comments from the commissioners on this one? Adam saying no, Jim Rand saying no, George Riley?
I, I can't resist being just a little nosy. This is well beyond our scope, but what is the ultimate?
One question.
Okay, thank you. The, the ultimate change is what you're making number six longer? Is that what's going on here?
Um, that, the way it has been described to me, and, and the club can jump in if I get it wrong, but, but there's a lot of holes on site, which are kind of straight shots to the green with a little rise. And they're trying to get a little more variety where they can, given the constraints of the course. And so this gives you a little kind of left turn and they're looking for a little bit of a lower green and a higher green. So it's, it's just, you know, trying to make a variety of play with the course and improvements.
All right. Good answer. Thank you. That's, that's as far as I'll go.
The last thing I should mention before you might close is that, not to be presumptuous, but it's hard to get the types of contractors they need to do this work. And they have one lined up and for September, mid-September, September 12th or something like that, that is anticipating to come here after another job. So we're just hoping you're able to make your decision well ahead of that, so we can keep that contractor's schedule.
Sounds like they're trying to lower the slope on the course, George. Jeff Ball, any questions on this one, sir?
Wouldn't be surprised, no.
All right. Let's go to the general public. Anyone in the general public have any questions on this one? Seeing none, hearing none. I think we're okay. Did we get a letter in this one from Darren Ostafine? Or is it the other one? Darren Ostafine's fine?
There's really no new permanent surface here.
It's 139 acres and we're talking about, you know, 20,000 square feet, right?
We're actually, and we're reducing hardscape coverage.
Yeah, I read that thing.
Zero impact.
Right. And then just relative to the, to the two neighbors that did submit letters, they're working with you and Wesley Stout Landscape Architects, so they'll be fine.
Yep, the club has been talking to them and, and the, the landscape plan reflects those conversations.
Fantastic. With that said, I would add to the station a motion to close this hearing. Great. Adam makes the motion, Jeff makes the second. All in favor? Fantastic. All right.
Thank you.
We'll deliberate tonight.
Well, we're going to try to deliberate this one tonight also. Craig?
Excellent.
We'll get your verbal answer hopefully tonight in direction for staff. And then you'll get some written documentation if we get everything done. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is Coastal Site Plan Review Number 352A is an Apple Flood Stent Prevention Application Number 429, Land Filling and Regating Application Number 490A, 237 Long Neck Point Road LLC, 237 Long Neck Point Road. Propose to perform and repair work to existing seawall, construct a new concrete terrace and steps. The proposal is to construct and install a new dock consisting of a fixed pier, ramp and platform and perform related site development activities within regulated areas. The 1.4 plus miles acre subject property is located on the east side of Long Neck Point, approximately 0.4 miles south of its intersection with Pear Tree Point Road. And it's shown on Assessors Map Number 61 as lot number 12 in the R1 zone. Now, we've seen this project like four times in the last couple of years, right?
That's correct. This is the 237 Long Neck Point Road property. And this is an application for seawall repairs and a dock. The dock has received approval from the Army Corps of Engineers as well as the State of Connecticut DEEP. And only a small portion is within Planning and Zoning Commission jurisdiction. The interesting part of this proposal is the repairs to the existing seawall. And Tim DeBarlo Mio of Sound Engineering Associates included some great pictures that are very helpful in understanding that it is a pretty big seawall right on the water there. So there's a lot of work to be done. It's going to be interesting for, you know, they're going to be out there quite a while working on this. Interesting how they're going to access it. But basically it's a two-part application. The dock is pretty straightforward. But basically, it's a two-part application. The dock is pretty straightforward and the retaining wall is what Tim's mostly here to talk about. So I'll turn it over to Tim at this point.
Welcome, sir.
You gotta turn your microphone on, buddy. You're muted. You're talking to yourself.
There we go. Thank you, gentlemen. So if I could share my screen, I can just roll through some of these drawings and and some of these photos. It'll give you a really good, as Jeremy said, idea what what's going on here. Let's see.
You're good to present, Tim.
Okay, let me just bring it up here if I can. There we go. Pardon my problem here, having a try it again.
Tim, I got a nine-year-old that can probably get it done for us.
This is, yeah. It's not, for some reason, it's not letting me, it's not letting me grab the the entire.
Presentation?
Yeah, it's just a PDF. Let me try it one more time.
Chris, why is he just in space? That's what he's doing.
Looks like.
There we go. Okay.
There you go. You got it. You got it. You got it.
Okay, you can all see this. I'm just going to scroll through these very quickly. So this is, this is, they have a stairs down to what what we're referring to as a lower terrace. And this is the actual, where my hand is, the actual top of the seawall. And then we have a an armored stone slope that goes up the shoreline here. And I will scroll through. That's a view looking from the beach toward the house. This is the northern end of the property. The property line is, there's a fence right here. The property line is right about on this edge here. And again, this is this lower terrace area. You can see the masonry seawall is is, you know, a lot of deferred maintenance related to that. Again, looking at it towards the north, this is a concrete steps here that we're proposing to remove and replace with steps that are a little bit more to code and a little bit, little bit safer. Again, looking at here, the steps again, you can get a good view of the armored slope along here. More broad picture of the property. Right here is the southern end of the applicant's property. And you can see the neighboring property has, you know, we're requesting as part of this application, toe protection stone along the seawall, very similar to what this property has here. And I'll get into that in a moment. There's a, there's a view. This is a good view of really the condition of the seawall. It's in it's in disrepair. And also, we can see that there's stones that are, some some of the stone slope is is not well placed. There are areas that have deficit of stone in here. So the application is to, is to reset some of this material. We will be importing some new material, but generally, we're not changing the geometry. We're, we're going to repair the existing condition as in a in a most practical manner. Okay? So again, here's a good close-up shot of the kind of disrepair we're we're seeing. And again, we see some, you know, some of this growth is indication of of really not, not a lot of cover of the stone and and some voids in here that need to get chinked in better. A little broader shot. There's the north end of the property there. And then looking, looking further to the north, and this is the neighboring property that has a pier, which is essentially identical to the pier we're we're proposing here, which, which again, has been approved by the Connecticut DEP and the Army Corps. Okay, and this is a shot standing again at this lower terrace. All right, just to give you sort of an idea of what we're talking about in a more general sense, this is a FEMA map showing the flood zones and the property is here where this pin is. And if I can, if I can zoom in on this, you can see, well, this here, this is in a VE elevation fifteen zone. And, you know, the center of Long Neck Point is is in an X zone. It's not in a flood zone at all because this elevation here is around twenty-two, twenty-three. But you can, you can sort of make out that the flood zone line is actually beyond the revetment area. Even though that that's at such a higher elevation. This is the approved site plan that's currently being underway. And I just bring this up as a matter of reference to the, to the applicant. So so again, here, we're, we're at our final grade here is at elevation twenty-four. The flood zone line is this, is this blue line right here? Okay, and this is our area of working of the stone slope and the seawall. One of the questions that came from Environmental Protection was what to do, what's going to happen with some plantings near the top? And again, just to, just as a response to that, we, we, we included in our follow-up package, the approved landscape plan from the previous application. Here's our waterfront property, waterfront drawing shows the approved site plan. This heavy line here is the flood zone. Here's the work area, damaged area that is is going to be repaired. And here are the steps. We, we have an access plan to current access plan coming around the side of the house and along this edge. We don't intend to have any heavy equipment other than a mini excavator out on the beach. The, the, the original application, we had a cut into the side slope here to get the, get some more equipment down at a lower elevation. We've since removed that because we would just want to not disturb that slope as as want to have the least disturbance to that slope as possible. The proposed plan shows repaired slope revetment, repaired seawall, relocated stairs. It it currently is in this vicinity. It's been shifted over several feet this way. And then the dock is in this area and it will connect here to the, to the seawall.
Hey, Tim, what's the, what's the date of that plan you're staring at? Is that the same one? It's April seventh?
No, this was, this was submitted as a response to questions from the town. So this was, this came in on, on the twenty-fourth, I believe.
Yeah, the the plans are dated May eighteenth, Tim?
Okay. Okay. Real quick, we just back up the the mini excavator. How are you getting it to the, to the lower terrace?
Okay, so that's, that's a great question. So we did some exploratory excavation initially on this to to find where the where the bottom of the seawall actually, actually is. And the, what they did was we have a large, a large excavator up top side and we simply lowered the mini excavator down. So, and and that's going to be a of normal normal daily operation. The excavator will not.
It's not going to stay on the bottom overnight.
It's not going to stay. No, no. On the day, day to day, it's going to be put up either on that lower terrace. That lower terrace, by the way, is at elevation twelve and a half right now. So it's high and dry for the most part, except during, during significant storms. The, the bottom of that seawall, the entire seawall is outside of the DEEP jurisdiction. It's landward of the CJL. So the intent is to, is to do all the work, have all the equipment, do whatever excavation is necessary outside of the State of Connecticut jurisdictional line. So we did not have to go and pull a permit for a seawall repair for this.
Yeah, I see, I see that on your plan. August fourteenth.
Yeah, correct. Correct. Okay. So it's, it's fairly, I'll say it's fairly straightforward. And we're going to limit the work on the, on the wall and the, and the stone slope to thirty-foot intervals so that we don't expose significant amount of wall at any given time. We, we have, we've submitted a a plan to to, what, what to to do in case of a storm is is forecast seventy-two hours in advance. So and and then on the best practices of, of keeping the site clean and and not storing any materials at at low-lying areas at any given time. So that's, that's it briefly.
And Tim, just out of curiosity, how long is the seawall project going to take?
It's going to take approximately eight weeks.
Okay.
How long's it take? How long's it take you to do thirty feet a week or a couple of days?
It's gonna, it's gonna be what do you say? We're figuring, we're figuring three to four days per, per thirty-foot section.
Okay. And then how many feet you have in total you're covering? You're going lot line to lot line, right? Your new wall is going to match.
It's about two, it's about two hundred feet, I believe.
Okay. So it's two hundred divided by thirty. There's the math. Okay. Got it. So we're dropping the thing down. And now, do you want to go to the other part, which is the dock?
I think the dock is straightforward, Tim. Anything we need to know when the, the state and the, and the Army Corps approved it? As I said, very little appears to be on town jurisdiction, correct?
That's correct. The only part that's on the town jurisdiction is is the, is the connection. The seawall. So, you know, as far as, you know, we have the, we've submitted the permits to the town of of that. It's, it's essentially the same.
It looks like on the existing site plan or the site development plan dated August fourteen, two, twenty twenty, the, the path comes from the pool and it makes a right, left-hand turn and goes towards the dock.
Are you seeing my screen right now?
Yeah, you got, you moved it, you moved it over a little bit from the twenty twenty plan.
Yeah, and that, and the reason is that there were comments from one of the adjacent property owners during, I was not involved, by the way, I was not involved in the dock application. This, I came in after this. So my understanding is during the approval process for the dock, it did get shifted over. And that's where, that's where the approved location is right now. And it's, it's very similar to, you know, in length and and geometry to the neighboring one. There's a, there's a profile. We could see, you know, it's just simply good, well, you know, it sort of shows it's sitting on top of the seawall here, but in reality, we're going to make it so that you don't have to step up onto the pier. It's, it's going to be a flush, a flush detail there. So.
Okay, that, that plan is is dated, I think, January fifth, twenty twenty-one inside the packet. I didn't see the, I didn't see the cross-section, but that's okay.
That's it. I, yeah, do you see the screen there now?
Yeah, I see there.
It should have been, it should have been in the packet, so.
Cross-section A dash A. Yep, I got it.
Okay. All right, that's, that's it for the dock.
Okay. Understood. Commissioners, questions, comments? We're going to start with Jim Rand since it's a, it's a coastal issue.
No, I, I don't have any, I don't have any questions or comments.
Okay, cool. Jeff Ball, anything? You're, you're a voting guy that saves people the water.
No, it looks good. Everything that they're doing, everything they've got, it looks all lined up, so.
Yep. George? You good? George shaking his head. Give me a thumbs up. You're, there you go. Adam, any questions, bud? Thumbs up. Fantastic. Great. We got letters in the file from, it was signed off by Thomas Eddy, the, the new guy, not.
Rick Talamelli sent in some comments and those are the comments that Tim de Bartolomeo has already responded to as part of your revised plans, right, Tim?
Correct.
Tim's saying yes.
If you like.
Plan as well.
That's the June seventh letter from, from Rich, right?
Yep.
So.
We've submitted, we've submitted that information to both parties.
Okay. And then we got the letter from Darren Ostafine due June sixteenth?
Yep.
She doesn't really say anything.
Doesn't say much, but he did review it and he said, you know, you don't need to deal with stormwater management. It's a dock and retaining wall repair.
Right.
So. And there were no neighbor comments submitted for the record.
Okay, so just ask anybody here. Is anyone in the general public like to speak to this application? Seeing none, hearing none. I think we're in good shape. Okay. We're almost ready to close this, right?
Yep.
Okay, Tim, you did a great presentation. Understand what you're doing. You're trying to fix that wall. If you compare it to the one next door, the one next door looks in a lot better shape than yours. So hopefully, at the end of the day, the new house and the new wall, you'd be off to the races. And it will never flood your house. So with that said, I would looking for a motion to close this hearing. Jeff makes the motion looking for a second. Jim Rand makes the second. All's in favor? Fantastic. All right.
We'll deliberate tonight and this one may have to wait till late July just because there's not enough
Yeah.
time to.
Yeah, you got a lot of stuff. They got a lot of stuff to write up with this one. So we'll try to get it done soon as possible. You're not starting construction right away, right?
They're hoping to start construction right around late July. So if we could, you know, if, if, if it takes to then, I think we can manage. But it's, it's, it's we're, we're, last we spoke with the contractor, beginning of August, so.
You got to get it before, we want to get it before hurricane season.
Right. And yeah, and a lot of concrete work too. So it doesn't want to, we don't want to be in the cold weather either. So.
Gotcha.
It's hard to tent, to tent the seawall.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Okay, that's the end of the public hearing. So now we're going to switch over to the general, to the general meeting.
Yep.
And we're going to go back to our friend Michael Murray and the people from federal. Okay, first item of the general meeting is amendment to business site plan application number two ninety-six, special permit application number two ninety-six, land filling regaining application number four oh nine, FR Darian LLC, the Commons at Nuroton Heights. Proposal to amend the commission's previously October tenth, twenty seventeen approval to allow office and medical and dental uses as permitted on the first floor of the building subject to percentage caps as would be permitted by the proposed amendments to Darian zoning regulations. COZR number three dash twenty twenty-two put forth by FR Darian LLC. So what we got in our packets was a, what I call red line, if I can find it, of the, yeah, there it is. We got a red line of the October tenth, twenty seventeen. We got a red line of the, um, October tenth, twenty seventeen. Um, a federal, um, adopted resolution with a whole bunch of spaghetti on it. And then we got a new clean one this afternoon. I want to let Jerry, Jeremy explain to what's going on, but I think the big thing's page three, right?
Yeah, so, uh, for those here on the call tonight, uh, as federal realty put forth a zone change earlier this evening, uh, to allow office use, uh, under certain circumstances, that really the next step is to change the October twenty seventeen, very specific site plan and special permit for federal realty. And if you saw that approval and what was put forth by federal realty at the time was the fact that, uh, the project would contain no office use at all. And so this is really part and parcel of the zone change, which would allow this. Um, the next step will be to modify the site plan and special permit. And so Mike Murray's been kind enough to show what changes they would need to their previous approval if the zone change were to go through. And commission members may be familiar, sometimes we do a zone change and a site plan special permit is one application. Sometimes we do it, it's two separate applications, uh, and in this case, we wanted to break them out separately. Um, and I think one of the keys here, which I talked about with Mike earlier today, is if the commission were to vote on the zone change, let's call it July twelfth, for example, there needs to be a little lead time between the commission's final vote and when that zone change takes effect. That's one of the requirements of state statutes. That you need to have time in between to allow the legal notice to go in the paper and other things to happen between the date of your vote and quote unquote, the effective date of the zoning change. So what Mike and, uh, Terry Cribbin are here to describe with, to you a little bit with the site plan special permit change are the changes to their previous approval that would be needed if the zone change were to go through. And certainly, what the commission could do is, uh, talk about them tonight and actually vote next week. Or when I say next week, I mean July twelfth and with an effective date going forward, because you, you can't change their approval till the zone change takes effect, let's call it July thirty-first, for example. So this is not uncommon for the commission to do such a thing, have a zone change and then a subsequent or uh, at the same time, change the site plan special permit. So Mike, you can tell, uh, Mike was kind enough to redline their previous approval to show you what changes you would need to that approval if the zone change were to pass to have it become a thought implemented as part of their approval. Hopefully that all makes sense.
I think so. Want to walk us through it, Mike, or Terry?
Sure, um, we, we can. It, it might take a while, but, uh, we, we did do it sort of line by line with Fred initially. And then, um, when we literally line by line, and then, um, when we made the most recent adjustment, we, we fixed it. But it's largely just to, uh, make sure that this new, if, if we're successful in this text change, that we didn't run afoul of the prior approval. So it's, it's largely square footage and, and whatnot, but Steve, if, if you'd like us to go through it, we, we can. It's up to you.
I think the only thing that really matters is if you look on, on page three of the old zoning resolution. Um, I mean, in, in the grand scheme of life, you changed, like it said, quick service restaurant, standalone restaurant is one thousand two hundred five square feet. Now we put a name to it of Gregory's Coffee, which is built, which is R four, right? The fitness center doesn't change, that, that, those items didn't change. I'm just looking to see where this square footage of the office switches, because if you add up on the bottom, which we didn't do it last time, this whole shooting match adds up to about a hundred and twenty-one thousand feet, which is equals what's on the site plan, that's part of the application, which is a hundred seventeen thousand feet plus four thousand square feet for Chase Bank, which was not on the other application, on the other document, which is fine. Um, I'm just trying to see where it, it's, I guess, I guess, oh, I see what's going on. The retail, first floor retail was fifteen thousand and change. Now it's going down to ten thousand seventy-one. Is that right? That's a big change, right?
Yes.
And up top it was twenty-seven thousand and it goes to sixteen thousand? Yep. Water Green doesn't switch. That bottom line number goes from, yeah, fifty-five thousand eight fifteen to thirty-eight thousand one twenty-four. Okay. So that's where the seventeen thousand square feet comes from. That's the biggest change, right? This chart?
Yes.
The other place that there's some significant changes is on the parking.
Yes.
Um, chart, which is on page eight. Uh, because there have been some changes to the actual parking regulations from the time we got the initial approval to now. So we calculated according to the current parking regulations, but we have more than enough booking. But the numbers were redone, bring it up to date.
Good point, Terry, that because the parking, uh, standards have been lowered, it actually works out much easier for, for you guys. So, uh, gives you a little more flexibility. So, uh, I know Terry and Mike have done a lot of legwork to reflect these changes and as, most of the changes are on page three and page eight, almost all of the changes, I see. And it's just some updating to the plans and some other notes, but we wanted to bring this to the commission's attention. Uh, that this is part and parcel of the zone change. And, uh, we can certainly put this on for a vote next week unless you have.
Can we vote on it today? Let's start a meeting again.
You could, and just having an effective date of, say, August first, you could certainly do that if the zone change takes effect.
Okay.
See that? So sometimes you want to wait to make sure the zone change gets voted on first.
Okay.
And then the same night. And have it run concurrently, if you will.
Okay, but we can, we can give you a sense of the meeting.
That's what I'm looking for tonight is a sense and then we can draft something up.
Okay. And with regard to the parking adjustments, if you look on that one chart, it was required to have one thousand one hundred and eighty-one parking spaces. If you guys remember, um, a couple of months ago, maybe it's more than a couple of months ago, we changed the parking requirements for one bedrooms and two bedrooms and we knew this was going to happen. When we changed the parking requirements for one bedrooms and two bedrooms, that allows them, they, they don't need one thousand one hundred eighty-one parking spaces anymore. They only need nine hundred and twenty-four, according to the chart that's on page eight. So we kind of saw that, knew this was coming. Um, it doesn't really affect everything. The parking's already built anyway. The only thing that really would have mattered if they want to stuck another, you know, building in the middle of this shopping center to create more square footage, because they have more space, but I think that ship's already sailed. It's pretty tight anyway in there. Okay. Um, anything else significant on here? Nothing. That's really the big things, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the commissioners on this one? It is a general meeting item, so usually we do a sense of a meeting on general meeting items and, um, vote on it immediately, but because this is tied into the zoning change, which we haven't done yet.
We'll do it together on the twelfth.
And we get a sense of a meeting if there's any issues, um, just so we can give them some direction, so they know what's going on. So Adam, George, Jeff, any questions on this? Adam's saying no. Jeff's good. Jim's good. Go ahead, George.
I, I would just comment that I, I am comfortable relying on staff that, uh, all of this is accurate. Frankly, it's, uh, it's kind of blurry to me. I'm, I'm sure Mike and his client want to be sure they're getting what they're bargaining for, but, uh, uh, Jeremy and Fred, I'm sure are protecting the town too, so, uh, I just thought I got to say that.
Thank you, George. Now Fred and, uh, I think Fred and, uh, Terry did a lot of work behind the scenes, getting the ship, ship shaped, so to speak.
Yeah, okay, cool. So at the end of the day, Mike, um, I think, I think you're going to be in good shape. If the zoning change goes through, we deliberate that later tonight, if you want to stick around. Um, and then this, this is kind of just to clean up and, and, um, you know, other work that's going to follow after the fact, just to button everything up. But what you did on the other one, if the other one goes through, then the chart that's on page three makes sense. And then the chart on page eight makes sense. Okay?
Okay, great.
All right, let's move on to the next item on the agenda then. All right, um. Next item, deliberation possible decision on the following, this is a plan application number two forty-five As in Apple. Special permit application number three twenty-five, Darian Hot Chicken LLC, one fifty-one, Boston Post Road. Proposed to establish a new three thousand five hundred square foot minus square foot quick service restaurant with drive-through facilities and is based previously occupied HSBC Bank. And performed related site development activities, including installation of new hardscape areas, landscaping, lighting, and store mortar management. Improvements to the property are to be included a sixth, a new sixteen seat outdoor patio for seasonal dining and reconfigure the thirty space parking lot and drive-through facilities. Hearing closed on May tenth. Decision deadline is July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm recused on this one, so I'll go dark for now.
Thank you, sir. Yes, you are. Um, so Mike, you're going to stick around till we get through this stuff. We'll try, we'll try to make it quick. Um, all right, we have a proposed, um, resolution on our packet dated, um, June twenty-eighth.
Right, we're going to change the dates on all these, right? So all the resolutions you see have already started. Marking mine up to note that they'll all be dated June thirtieth with, uh, date of action June thirtieth, date of publication. Uh, we're hopefully going to be, stick with July seventh, et cetera. So, uh, that's, you see anything like that, flag it for me, but, uh, we're aware of that change. Um, pretty, uh, straightforward conditions of approval. A lot of this we talked about during the hearing process. Uh, traffic and deliveries, hours of operation of the restaurant, uh, fumes and odors, uh, keeping the dumpster closed, certain pickup for garbage. Um, putting in the plantings, maintaining the plantings, putting in a new fence, eight foot high along that rear line to replace the existing fence. Uh, the drive-through room prom, condition N. Uh, the important one is, uh, condition O, any substantial change to the nature of the proposed use. Uh, you may recall that the, uh, police chief's concerned that this become a different use. Um, and then condition P talks about certifications required before CO. That they have to prove to us that everything was built correctly. The engineer is going to have to certify some things. The photometric lighting person, um, landscape architect, the acoustic person. So everyone who testified at the hearing will have to certify that it was done correctly.
Okay. Hey, Terry Cribbin, can you mute, mute your microphone? She's so microphones on. Okay, you.
Yeah.
Bingo. Um, the one, one point Jeremy came up was change of use O. If you remember in the, um, in the hearings, we talked about it, if, you know, Darian Hot Chicken lands up selling to Kentucky Fried Chicken or something like that. Um, or it goes with different fast food type of use or quick service type of use, we want to know about it in advance. Um, you know, you never know if, if a chain like this gets sold to, you know, you could say Chick-fil-A or one of those type of things. Um, so that would come back if it's a minor review, staff is going to make, will make the call on that.
But as I said, the resolution kind of tracks what we talked, the many issues that were discussed during the hearing. You remember Jay Klein and a number of experts. And you may recall that we also had peer reviewer Joe Canis and peer reviewer Mike Galante. They're discussed on pages two and three. The ARB loved the changes that, uh, Phil and Brandy are making to the building. It's, uh, it's going to have a very nice look. Some outdoor dining, indoor dining, drive-through.
The other item that's.
Window, I believe, if I recall.
Yep. The other item that's important is, um, we did the same thing inside Shake Shack. Um, item E as in Edward, for the first two weeks, the restaurant's open, the property owners shall hire police officer direct traffic on and adjacent to the site from during lunchtime, which is eleven thirty to two, and at night from five thirty to eight PM every day. So we had the same provisions for these guys in, in E as in Edwards, as we did for Shake, um, for Shake Shack. And then once, once the, you know, people get used to it and the initial buzz changes, then hopefully it goes back, it goes down to normal. Um, we can always adjust that if we never have.
Yeah, I think, yeah, see how it goes.
Yeah. Um, questions, comments, scrupulous errors, typos, anything in this one? Anybody found? This wall in the back is going to be eight feet instead of six feet. That's number, um, number twenty-six. We talked about the fumes. Looks like they got everything out here. Um, questions, comments, changes, nothing? Okay, with that said, invitation, a motion to approve as submitted. Adam makes a motion, Jeff makes the second. All's in favor? Four, nothing.
Thank you.
Four, nothing, one abstention, and there's only five of us. Great. Darian Hot Chicken, Jay Klein, welcome. Call your client. You did a great job.
Thanks, everyone. Happy fourth.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. And, and hopefully you get open soon. I'm getting hungry.
I got dinner next.
Next item on the agenda is coastal site plan review number six seven As in Apple, flood, flood damage prevention application number fifty-five As in Apple. Brindley Lore Maloney at thirteen Edge Hill Drive proposes to remove an existing dock on the property and construct and install a new dock in the same location consistent with a fixed pier ramp and platform rate and perform related site development activities within regulated hearing here, areas. The hearing closed on June seventh, twenty twenty-two. We have a draft resolution in our packet. Again, this is the small area that's about six by six, which is our jurisdiction. If you remember this application, I think this was the application where the existing dock was in such disrepair. They didn't even get inspections of the existing dock. Um, and this is.
By the way, I'm back, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, sir. Mr. Riley, you're back out of the darkness.
Yes, indeed.
Sort of. Um, again, a standard dock, two pagers. There's no public comment on this one. Um, nobody really made any comments on it. It was same application that's on a lot of our docks in town. Um, they're putting the same dock where the old one was. They're going to bring in all the old, get rid of the old dock and get rid of the new, and bring in the new dock from a barge with hand labor. Um, that's why I was asking those kind of questions on the other one at one thirty-seven, uh, but I get how they're doing that one. Questions, comments, typos, scrupulous errors, errors on this one at all?
Uh, Jeff, Jeff Ball has watched the video of this meeting. He wasn't there at the meeting, but he's watched it since then.
We're going to change the resolution date to the thirtieth?
Yep, we have that changed. Changed the dates in the header and.
Date of action twenty eighth, the thirtieth. I apologize, everyone, for, for switching to the last meeting too. I had to pick up my daughter at the airport. Actually drop her off at the airport. With that said, any questions, comments, changes to this one? Good? An invitation, a motion, answer a motion to approve as amended, and the only amendment is a change in dates.
Yep, correct.
Okay. Jim makes a motion, looking for a second. Adam makes a second. All is in favor? Right. I got a backhand from Jeff Ball. All right, next item on the agenda. If landfilling regaining application number five twenty-eight, Gregory and Kimberly, um, Borough Sage, is that how you pronounce it?
I believe so.
Two nine seven West Avenue proposes to construct a series of retaining walls and create a level yard area to stabilize the existing steep slope in the rear yard, perform related site home activities, including installation of store mortar mattress system. This is the house that is on West Avenue, just off of Hollow Tree Ridge Road. They add a second story to it, backs up the Palmer's. It has a backyard that's, um, eroding into Palmer's. And they're going to now have the money to stabilize and put in a series of walls. Um, it's not really a flat yard, but it's going to make it a, a lot nicer. Um, they're putting in a little sort of drainage plan, which is really just a, um, French drains for the ward is going to go from the right to the left. There's nothing, there, no rock crushing going to be done. They're just bringing the stuff by hand. Um, okay, they get this, you're going to get the, um, Asbeld survey at the end of this one, right?
Yep.
Okay.
That's on, uh, condition G.
Condition for Asbeld survey. Yep, we didn't get any testimony from anybody that talked about it. It was pretty straightforward. Darren Ostafin signed off on it. We didn't get a, a third party engineer interview, it's been so small. Question.
This is another one where Jeff watched the video of the meeting. He wasn't here, but got caught up.
Great, thanks, Jeff. You're a lot of video watching kid. Um, questions, comments, scrupulous errors, typos on this one? Good. Then, um, answer to a motion to approve as amended, and the amendments are just really the dates. So want to make that motion? Adam makes a motion. Jeff Ball is. Adam makes a motion, Jeff Ball has returned a second, Jim Rand seconded, all is in favor? Yeah, five, nothing. There we go, beautiful. George Riley's not in the game yet. I gotta get him on one of these. Uh, next item up for bid, subdivision application number 631 Richard and Kimberly Alexander, 37 Stephanie Lane. Proposes to divide the subject 1.44 acre plus minus acre property into two separate lots respectively. 26,957 square feet and 35,990 square feet in size. 37 Stephanie Lane will remain, the, will retain the 26,957 square feet, including the existing residence and all associated improvements. The 35,000 square foot building lot is to include an 18,000 square foot access driveway to Hoyt Street. And the address is going to be 215 Hoyt Street is to be donated, conveyed to Darien Land Trust and remain undeveloped. The conceptual improvements for 215 Hoyt Street shown, shown only to demonstrate the feasibility of a subdivision for the development purposes. This is the person that um, is subdividing their, their lot, and they have to prove that it's um, a viable, feasible, buildable lot. And they're going to donate to the land trust. You're never going to see a house on it. We have a draft resolution in our packet. It's another two pager, pretty straightforward. No one spoke about the hearing. There was a couple lawyers um, at the meeting. Um, at the presentation. We're going to get, the, the only big one, that's going to file the Mylar, that's it, right?
Right, and that's condition E. Uh, state statutes require that they file a Mylar, which will finalize it. And they have to do that within a certain timeframe after this approval. And then the commission's not approving any building or development. They're just approving the division here.
There's no work, there's no subdivision, there's no roads.
Never to be developed.
There's no nothing. Yep.
In fact, we're not, we're not even commenting on the transfer to the land trust. We don't, which I, is, is appropriate. I'm just commenting.
Yeah. They could, they could, they could sit there forever. They can sell it to the land trust or give it to the land trust. Um, questions, comments, typos on this one? Nothing we're changing is the um, the date on top and the dates throughout, including the last page, right?
But nothing on the last page, in this case, the subdivision statutes apply.
Okay. Um, looking for a motion to approve as, as amended. George Riley made that motion. There he is. George Riley makes a motion, looking for a second. Jim Rand makes a second. All is in favor? Bingo. Next. Uh, what do we got here? Boston special permit application number 312A Altitude LLC. At 1897 Boston Post Road proposal to establish a quick ser, new quick service restaurant selling coffee, beverages, and baked goods. In a 2,125 square foot portion of the first floor, the hearing closed on, on June 7th, 2022. This is the moots, excuse me. This is going to be the moots um, restaurant, coffee place. Some people call it convenience store. That's in the new building that the Vicaros built um, at the top of Rings End Road, where the old um, was, it was an old. For a long time. The building's been completed. It looks beautiful. It's got five apartments, and now this is just approving the ground floor. Space. Um, do we ever get, it's really, it doesn't matter, but did they ever get the approval of the signage?
Yes, they went back to ARB this past Tuesday and uh, no problem. They're all set. They've actually uh, got the deed restriction for the affordable unit. That's all set. So this is the last piece to that entire.
Fantastic. Questions, comments, typos, scrupulous errors on this one? At the bottom, it talks about the um, the moots and the floor plan. They, when we talked about this, there was a, you know, a half of parking space issue that they thought they might have. But my hope and belief is that this is going to be a walking neighborhood, um, and there's plenty of parking around. And right now, there's only five apartments there, and they got a lot of parking. And also the guy next door is the kitchen guy. Is that the kitchen guy?
The first floor, the other first floor commercial use is a kitchen and bath, which is by appointment only, so should be uh, called a low intensity use.
Yeah. I think it's a cool use for the area. Questions, comments, typos, scrupulous errors on this one? Nothing? Everyone's good? Okay, looking for, we're going to change the dates again on here to June 30th.
And this is another one where Jeff Ball watched the video.
Jeff Ball watched the video, okay. Um, looking for a motion to approve as um, amended? Whose turn is it? Adam's turn? Jim gets a second. All is in favor? Mr. Orvis, are you going to vote? There you go, five, nothing. Fantastic. Moving right along. Uh, next one up, coastal site plan review number 15185 As an Apple flood zone prevention application. Number 197 As an Apple landfill regaining application number 105 As an Apple. Mark and Margaret Mabel at 21 Token East Trail proposal to erase an existing residence and construct a new single family dwelling west of its current location. Construction of a new driveway, patio areas and retaining walls, and construct and install a new dock. Um, consisting of fixed pier ramp platform and form related sites of activities within regulated areas, including regrading. The hearing closed on June 7th. This is the, I want to call it a cottage. We call it cottage over there? It was a rental house?
Down on Token East Trail, right on the water. They're looking to build a new house.
Yep.
Change driveway, I think.
Moving the driveway around. Um, there was some question at, at some of the hearings. We have a draft resolution in our packet to go over. What did we say? The neighbors said, the neighbors, do we have any neighbors there?
Nope.
No, no.
Presented this application.
Yep. No comments from DEP. It's going to be a six bedroom house, 7,000.
The dock as well.
Yep.
You may recall that they, one of the reasons they continued the hearing was to allow the, to include the dock in the application, paragraph 10.
Yep, that got approved. Uh, what else? I thought, does, does there sense in this?
We talked about building height. You may remember.
That's right, yeah.
One of the conditions of approval here in condition A is uh, more details on the building height. Make sure that all checks out.
Yeah, the, the plans that we got didn't have the building heights on them on one of the elevations. And so they wouldn't, we closed the hearing regardless. Um, and they're going to come back to um, staff to make sure that's all set. Plus, there's also going to be a um, a flood certification because in a flood zone.
Elevation certificates are one of the requirements, uh, H2 requirement.
Yep, and that also is going to come, that's going to make sure the building height's on there too. Everything's above finalized, built survey. It's out of flood zone, any blasting. But they, they have, they were going to have blasting on this one. Did we put?
They were, they, uh, they were. We, we asked during the hearing and um, in fact, that is in uh.
It's, it's G3.
Uh, binding five on page two. Engineer Dr. Bestin noted there will be some blasting and whole ramming done as part of this project.
Do we care how many days?
Didn't really come up during the hearing.
Yeah, I remember that.
So.
Doesn't matter.
See how it goes. Hopefully not, not a lot. They are going to have to put a new septic system in, and that may require some blasting or whole ramming.
Okay. Questions, comments, scrupulous errors, typos on this one? Adam saying no, Jim Rand saying no. We're just going to change the date again to the 30th.
Yep.
On this one. Um, okay, looking for a motion to approve as, as edited or amended? I think that was Adam. Uh, Jim Rand made it. Adam gets a second. Okay. All is in favor?
Five, zero, and this is another one where Jeff watched the.
Jeff, Jeff's hands getting taller. He's way higher. All right, Jeff, you watched this one on TV, right? Yep. I like talking to myself. Everyone's silent tonight. Jeff doesn't even have his headphones on. All right, um, Mark, maybe we did that. Now we got deliberations on any public hearings closed on June 30th. Bingo. All right. All right, let's go back to the first one. All right, the first closed public hearing we did, which was continuation, uh, next one. Proposed amendments to Darien's under regulation COZR number three dash 2022 put forth by FR Darien LLC. This is what we just heard, where federal wants to add um, the use of dental and medical inside the complex. It's going to be limited to 10% of the overall complex. The complex is somewhere around, it's a commercial component of the complex. The complex is somewhere around 125,000 feet on the site plan that we got submitted with the application. It says 117,000 feet. And then in the resolution dated October 10th, 2017, including Chase Bank, it's 121,000 feet. Um, they also have Valas, which is next to it, which is under similar ownership. We came up with a definition, or they came up with the definition that. Hopefully we're going to prove, which um, includes anything that's contiguous or non-continuous under single management and single ownership, so that would pull in Valas. So that makes it closer to um, 125,000 feet, so 10% would be about 12,500 square feet of commercial space. Which is not a whole lot in the grand scheme of life. Um, any questions on this ones at all, things we have to, tripwires we have to look out for? Adam, you okay with it? Okay. Uh, George Riley, you okay with it? Yeah. Jim Rand, you okay with it? Jeff Ball's giving me a thumbs up. Fantastic.
So we'll draft up something for the 12.
I just want to add just one other quick sentence. So the only other thing we're doing is, yes, we already approved the definition of um, of complex. Being all the things are together. That's what it comes out to. And the other item was the um, adding the word co-working space. In the definition of what office space is, which is, you know, a doctor, a lawyer, and a um, candlestick maker can all be in the same unit. As a co-working space, which is a membership type unit. Anyone have any questions or comments relative to that? Good?
Probably not a candlestick maker, but.
Hey, it's one of the shop, because I did was a candlestick maker. Actually, it was a soap guy. He made soap.
Just saying, I don't think it'd be permitted.
You and Mike can have the same offices in the same space at different firms.
I would look forward to that.
So it would be cool. Um, okay, so Steph, will you please draft the resolution?
For 712.
For 712? Um, and then we already did a sense of meaning of the other item earlier.
Yep, these, when you say the other item, the site plan and special permit.
Correct. And, and also we did in our general meeting, um, as relates to this one. First, we have to approve the um, zone change, which we're going to direct staff to draft a resolution that approves the zoning change that they requested. And then after that, um, in the general meeting item, that will come hand in hand and, and follow thereafter.
Got it.
Fantastic. All right, Mike, you hear all that?
Yes, thank you.
You're good. Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Good luck with it. Keep those, keep those cranes and, and hammers and sledgehammers going.
Thank you, guys.
The next item on the agenda is um. Special permit application number 60 dash R site plan, land refill, landfill regaining application number 121 Ephesian Frank. Country Club of Darien at 300 Mansfield Avenue. Um, they want to move the, the um, organic storage area. Where they're going to put rocks and mulch and sand from the left side. Uh, right now, it's, it's against a Goodwise River. Now it's going to move to the right side, which is against a existing um. Existing road that they have there, grab a driveway, and then move T box over to the left and a green over to the left. Any questions or comments on that one? They're going to, the, the, they're going to put up a stone wall that separates the um, the um, area, like spolder wall.
Yeah, fence and a lot of arbor bedding.
Yeah. So if you, if you see it at other stuffs, other spots, sometimes they do those things with um, and it's, it's the, the real terminology. They call them um, Guinea box. Is it? No. They, they usually do the concrete blocks, and this, they're going to have fancy boulders there. Behind the boulders, they're going to have a white, a white vinyl fence. And do a landscaping plan, which is part of the application. Question, comments on that one? Anyone, everyone's good with that? Okay, Steph, you please draft the resolution to approve that?
Yep.
Fantastic. Um, and then the last one, do we want to talk about um, the Kling residence at 137?
237 Long Neck Point Road.
Okay, 237 Long Neck Point Road is coastal site plan review number 352 As an Apple flood zone. Flood damage prevention application number 429 landfill regaining application number 490A. Uh, 237 Long Neck Point Road LLC, 237 Long Neck Point Road. Looks like they have to fix their retaining wall, and the retaining wall next to them looks in a lot better shape than this one. Um, they're also going to put in a dock that that house does not have a dock today that was approved by um, DEP. From some of the plans that we got, um, it looks like the dock was moved over like 25 feet or something like that. Um, so now it's 113 feet away from the next dock that's next door. Um, it looks like it's necessary work. It's all going to be done um, sensitively um, in the flood zone, out of the flood zone. Um, we're getting kind of, well, the billing department takes care of all that stuff, right?
Yeah, I'm going to have to, I, I believe a zoning permit will be needed, but I'll check on that.
Okay. Um, questions, comments on this one?
So is this a lot different from the uh, applications they've been filing for the last two years?
They, they filed one application for the first time for the house, then they want to save a tree, and they moved the house six feet to the left. So that was the second application.
I thought it was two years of applications for the dock and for the, okay, so it's just, okay, we're good.
They're just, they, they, they're doing the applications in pieces.
Yeah, it's a big project. It's a big house, uh, pool, it's a.
That's where I go tubins. I just hope the dock's not so long. If my kid hits it when we're going tubing. Questions, comments to this one? Direct staff to draft up a resolution? Yep, okay, Steph, do you drop a resolution to fix that, to approve that one?
Yep.
And then the next item, um, minutes, uh, we're not going to do any, but there's only three general meetings, right?
Yep, three meetings. You were all here, I believe, for all three.
Okay, we have three sets of minutes. Um, May 17th, May 10th, and June 14th.
Correct.
The first one is May 10th. I think everybody was here. Uh, yep, O'Reilly Ridge, yep, okay.
Was all here, it was a live, live meeting.
Yep, we talked about Great Island. That was a simple, easy one. At the beginning, I think we were all in, in, in person. We talked about the Mabel House over on Token East Trail. We went over the um, the moots, the altitude Darien, the moots convenience store. Pepperman 17, Pepperman 16 hours from that, but that was on here. Um, Mr. Riley took care of that one. We did the continuation of the new um, restaurant that's at 42 Center Street, the little um. What, what do they call that thing? They call it the tasting room, the tasting room.
Yeah, tasting room.
Tasting room. Um, we finalized the Darien Hot Chicken item there, and the reason why that was continued was for some minor items. I don't know why, but is that right? What else is on here? Yeah, that was a long one. That was the whole, that was the whole um. There was a whole one on, on the HSBC one. And then the last item that we talked about was the Andrew Trust Memorial Cabinet, 70, 70 Old Kings Highway. Questions, comments, typos, changes on this one at all? Okay, with that said and that said, enter a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Jim Rand makes the motion, looking for a second. Jeff Ball makes a second, all is in favor? Five, nothing. Fantastic. Moving right along. Next item, May 17th, my best friend's birthday. The meeting for that one, I think everybody was here. Again, it was um, that was a, that was a hybrid meeting? No, it was, yeah, that was, that was a virtual meeting. We, yeah, we talked about.
Yep, virtual.
We talked about um. Well, that was the first, how come we picked up the restaurant again? They came back the second time?
Yeah, the first one, they had to postpone.
Got it. So that's when we had the Los Dallas Restaurant. We talked a little bit about um, Darien Heights, um, the Commons, Darien Heights, again, on the Pemberton 16. There was another night of that. We can skip over that one. Then we had Dave Keating give us the um, update on the Darien Affordable Housing. Plan under statute 830 days and George. Amendment to the site plan for 90 Perch Point Road. Now that would say that was, that was um, by the gleats and changed a couple of things on the open space restrictions on that one, because they had a house that was going to be proposed there. Cause they had a house that was gonna be proposed there. That was another one. Then we did the minute, then we deliberated on Darian Hot Chicken, approved some minutes. Questions, comments, typos on this one? Adam's good. Jim Rand's good. My other lawyer, George Riley, you okay? Get a thumbs up, thumbs up. Jeff Ball, you good? Fantastic. With that said, enter the motion to approve these minutes as submitted. Adam makes a motion. George Riley yawns and makes a second. Alls in favor? All right, five, nothing. One another one. All right, next one, June 14th, our minutes.
Yeah, I find commission members attending, June 14th, we'll put in Jim Rand twice. I'm thinking maybe Jeff, were you at that meeting? I think you were.
I was.
Yep, so we're gonna replace the first Jim Rand here with Jeff Ball.
This was the hybrid one.
Yep.
So it's Vanny, Ball, Adam, George and Riley in the room and then Rand online. That's the hybrid.
I can't, I joined late. I couldn't figure out which, which part to put.
We're glad we had you. Yeah, that was when we did the executive session. We were in executive session first. We came out of executive session, went into it. What else? We did not do any action on the executive session. We went over the affordable housing plan again. We talked about 70 Old Kings Highway again because that's when the, the first time we talked about it, we didn't know about the church next door. What else? Todd Bosé, he spoke. He was one of the councils. Complete anger, that's when we approved the complete anger deliberations. Then we have a resolution inside there, which is from, which one's this? 219, is that complete anger? Yeah, that's a complete, the complete angular resolution. We can't change that since that's a resolution. Flood damage application for Woodway Country Club. Those are that, they're raising the houses and their resolution to go along with that at Woodway. What else? And then we, special permit application for the moots. We went over that one again. Mark Mabel, we went over his house again. That was deliberations on that one. We did deliberations on Stephanie Lane. And we did deliberations on Six Pratt Island, which was the house that's doing the couple bump outs and getting themselves out of A FEMA regulations. Ed Shell Drive, that was the new dock we just approved. And then 297 West Avenue, that's the backyard that we just approved. And then there was a chairman's report, director's report and four minutes. Questions, comments, typos on this one at all? Nope, we're good. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Jeff Ball makes a motion, looking for a second. Jim Rand makes a second. Alls in favor? Five, nothing. Jeff Ball said yes. With the change. Yep, Jeff Ball was, so it was approval to change it as amended, as amended. Next item on the agenda is chairman's report. The only big item that I have to report is that I'm kind of excited that the Great Island was approved by the RTM. That purchase should go well, or that acquisition by the town should go well. I can tell you, if everyone in this commission stays on the commission for the next five years, there's gonna be a lot of stuff that's gonna come with regards to that in my guesstimation. We haven't seen any plans, but there will be a lot of work to be done there at some point in time in our life. I think that's really, really, really exciting for the town and I congratulate everyone that worked really hard on it. Director's report, anything from you?
Yep, we are, as you may recall, we got a no meeting next week, which is July 5th. And we'll be meeting July 12th, 19th and 26th. July 12th won't be very lengthy, but July 19th will be a little lengthier. And then of course, one of the things on July 26th will be the public hearing on the Affordable Housing Plan. And we have a number of public hearing items.
July 26th is a public.
July 26th, yes. Ends out the 19th and 26th. So hopefully the rest of you can attend those, those meetings so we can have a quorum.
Fantastic. And if you guys would just give me the latitude, just to go back to the chairman's report. Tonight, you might see on your screen, Amy Barzante, his name is here. Amy Barzante was nominated by the RTC to take the seat of Karen Gaetley at our next meeting. So in our next meeting, the commission's gonna interview Mrs. Barzante for a commission, for a seat on the commission. If she gets approved by us and sworn in, then she will be able to take her seat. If she gets sworn in that night, great. If she doesn't get sworn in that night, then she can take a seat if she gets approved on July 19th. Okay? So I think everyone's supposed to be at the meeting next week.
Next week, the 12th.
The 12th, yeah. I think everyone's supposed to be meeting on the 12th. And so that's what we're gonna be doing. That's the most important item on there. With that said, this is a special meeting, so we can't add any other business to it. Nothing gonna be discussed. It is now 9:29. So we banged this thing out in two hours. Adam's smiling. Our invitation motion to close. Jeff Ball's making the motion. Jim Rand's got the second. Alls in favor? Thank you, everybody. Great to see you all. Hopefully our next, our next meeting is live and in person, right?
Yes, we're expecting July 12th to be live.
Have a great fourth.
It's gonna be a hybrid though, cause Jim Rand might not come, right?
Yep, we'll, we'll see what we can do about a hybrid meeting.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, everybody. Have a happy fourth weekend.